Well, you took away my audience because I really didn't want to talk to you all. But so it goes. My name is Frida and I really didn't want to talk to you all. I wanted to talk to the fellow people, but you took away the people. So I wanted to let them know and give them a message, a warning, and let them know that their city council inch by inch is dismantling civic engagement as we know it, further contributing to the fascism that is being felt across the country. And here are some examples. First is the gross weaponization of Judaism. When people speak out against Israel, the IDF, the political militaristic financial objectives, the genocide that they're executing against Palestine, they're deemed anti-Semitic. Speaking out against Israel does not mean that you are anti-Semitic. Being anti-Zionist does not mean you are anti-Semitic. This board conflates the both and it's negligent and it's dangerous and you all know that. So cut it out. Second is the clear racist behavior against Taisha Adams by her white colleagues. Taisha has spoken out against injustice and she has faced violent verbal attacks from Zionists and you guys don't stand up with her. What the fuck? We all know what happens when black voices speak out against injustice. Their risk, their safety is at risk and even their lives. Hence Chris Smalls. Next is the stringent rules of decorum. This council has made it difficult more and more to participate. Fucking with the flags. This flag matters. This flag doesn't. You can't clap. You can't clap. Cutting out video for access. What the hell? What is going on? That's an accessibility issue. And now turning meetings to 5:30? That affects working class Americans trying to get here on time.
Your time is up.
And stop working with Flock.
Time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up. Okay. Our next three speakers are Angelique Velasco, Eliseo Velasco, and Giselle Hertzfeld. The virtual ones are interspersed with the in-person. So you can begin.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you were doing something virtual. Yes, my name is Angelique and I wanted to bring to your attention as far as mental health goes in our community, especially for our elders. And I do appreciate that we've recently had the Hilltop Senior Housing built for our unhoused homeless seniors. And I would like to see more focus on that as well. We still continue to see a lot of unhoused folks who are struggling mentally and their mental health is deteriorating the longer they're on the streets. So I'd like to see more of the Hilltop Senior Housing. I think that's going to do a huge positive effect on the community so we can support our elders that are needing our care in the later stages of life. That is the biggest thing is just finding that support, also for resources for our unhoused so that we can continue to find housing, jobs, and accessibility. I know working with unhoused population myself, I am finding that there is a lot of boundaries that come up for folks and they are unable to navigate. I know libraries are very helpful, but they can't provide advocacy. If we could help to provide advocates in the libraries for mental health, I think that would provide and cut out a lot of the running around and red tape and the walls so that folks, especially our unhoused seniors, can get that assistance before they get into a point that they're not able to get help anymore and they continue to be on the street. I've just seen the deterioration. I know my time is limited. Thank you. And I do, I would love to see more discussion as far as folks having a time where can they just discuss openly? I know there's a lot of tensions tonight, but I think everyone needs to be able to speak and maybe looking at how that you've chosen to do that. Thank you.
Time is up. Thank you. Okay. Now we have Eliseo Velasco, Giselle Hertzfeld, and David Enzine.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Velasco.
Sir, can you raise the microphone?
I moved to Boulder 40 years ago. And I found this the best city in Colorado for my work and my family. So the facilities we have in this town are very superior to many other places. System to go to the airport is very helpful. I'm retired now, but I had a chance to use the transportation to Boulder, from Boulder to the airport during the RTD. At the beginning, I had to go to Stapleton and it was no transportation facilities like we have now. One observation I have in Boulder is there are intersections. A rush hour needs to increase the timing for the left turn because a rush hour, the traffic gets jammed. And I don't know what else to say. So.
You don't have to say anything else.
Yeah. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Our next three speakers are in-person, Giselle Hertzfeld and David Enzine, and then Hillary Eisenman virtually. Although we do only have five minutes left in open comment.
Good evening, Boulder City Council. I address you once again as the great granddaughter of a Jewish victim of the Holocaust. My whole life, I have carried a deep ancestral trauma from this horrific crime against humanity. I've spent my life studying war crimes and genocide. My deepest question has always been, how can good people stand by and allow their nation to commit a genocide? And if I ever get the chance to meet my great grandfather in the afterlife, I want to be able to look him in the eye and tell him that I did everything in my power to end the cycle of violence that claimed his life. For the last two years, I have witnessed the horrific slaughter of the Palestinian people in Gaza and the violent occupation of the West Bank committed in the name of the ancestral trauma that I carry. I've witnessed Boulder City Council deny any responsibility for addressing these crimes against humanity, using the convenient excuse that this is not a local issue and too controversial. Regarding locality, yes, it is an issue that affects us here locally. In addition to our Palestinian community members whose families are directly experiencing Israel's violent occupation, many more members of our community are being traumatized by bearing witness to the first livestream genocide which they know their tax dollars are paying for. The city of Boulder holds investments in companies like Caterpillar and Microsoft, which are responsible for the demolition of Palestinian homes and underlie the military and surveillance technologies being weaponized against Palestinians. Regarding the controversy, standing against the status quo of a morally corrupt society has always been a controversial act. From those who protested Nazi Germany to those who participated in the civil rights movement, throughout history, there have been a small minority of people who recognized that what their society was doing was wrong and put their lives and comforts at risk to do what was right. And this brings me to my final point. I want to thank and acknowledge council member Taisha Adams, who has demonstrated great courage and compassion in bringing this issue to the forefront of the conversation. I urge you to vote in favor of divesting Caterpillar and Microsoft.
Your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up. Okay. The last two speakers we're going to have time for within our 45-minute comment period are David Enzine in-person and Hillary Eisenman virtually.
Hello, City Council and staff, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is David Enzine. I live at 4020 Evans Drive in Boulder, former planning board member. I just wanted to, I was going to just speak as a person who bikes all the time about my love for the Core Archill Network concept and my love for really good uniform markings that help us all be safe. So thank you for all that work. I'm going to skip everything else I was going to say and just add that Lucy Carlson Krakoff and Mike Mills were also going to speak tonight in favor of CAN. And I want to read this from Alexi Davis from Community Cycles, who's on their board. First, thank you, Steph, for your great work to improve the safety and comfort of Folsom Street, making the central corridor appealing with minimal impact on vehicle travel times. This plan will substantially reduce the hundreds of crashes on Folsom and hopefully prevent crashes like the tragic death of Helen Grasshore at Canyon Boulevard. We encourage council support of the Folsom Plan. Second, the Boulder community wants to thank council for your ongoing support of the Core Archill Network. We collected 88 cards thanking you, and I handed those over to Alicia a moment ago. Thank you. My favorite quote, "Thank you for caring about biking. It's life-changing and makes Boulder so special." Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. We're going to wrap up today's open comment with Hillary Eisenman speaking virtually.
I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Hillary Eisenman. I'm a lifelong Boulder resident and I would like nothing more than open comment to be dedicated solely to homelessness and mental health, transportation, and other local issues. Frankly, I would love to come back and speak with you about that in the future as a criminal defense attorney. That is where my passions are. But I am here to talk tonight about the local climate with regards to antisemitism and basically city council being hijacked to discuss Israel again and again. The past few years have been extremely difficult for the Jewish community and unimaginably painful since June 1st. It's horrifying that Jews anywhere should be attacked in the streets for being Jewish, but terrifying that this happened in Boulder. Many of us are grieving. We are grieving the loss of a sense of security and truly reeling, knowing the depths of antisemitism that lay somewhat dormant but have been unleashed and coded as political or anti-Israel. So contrary to the last speaker, frankly, I disagree with everything she said, but I wanted to thank the city council members who have spoken out against antisemitism and have boldly spoken out against a certain city council member and her own antisemitic speech and online posts. This has not gone unnoticed and we thank you for speaking out for the Jewish community. I also applaud the changes to public comment, and I think still more needs to be done. City council will not change the course of foreign affairs, but it can certainly stand for the citizens of Boulder. And I also implore those city council members who can't stand with their citizens to reconsider their values and whether they can in good faith be a public figure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So that's all that we have time for. To those that we did not get to, I'm sorry that we did not, but you will be first in line for the next open comment. So please, we will reach out to you to make sure that you're still interested in doing that. So I'll look to our city staff to see if you had any responses.
Not from me at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
No, thank you, Mayor.
Good. And our revised rules of procedures do allow for a 30-second per person council member response if anyone would like to do so. Nicole? Yeah. Nicole first and then go.
I just wanted to say to a couple of the speakers who were bringing up what the devastation that's happening in Gaza, comparing it to the Holocaust, it's a comparison that really is unnecessary. The horrific conditions in Gaza speak for themselves. There's no reason to invoke Jews or compare it to the Holocaust. I would also say that outrage that it targets only the Netanyahu government while Hamas' ongoing role in Palestinian and Israeli suffering is ignored or championed is also showing some bias. So I really hope that moving forward, we can speak without invoking Jews or making Holocaust comparisons.
Thanks for that, Nicole. I think, Taisha, you had something?
Yes, I actually just had a question.
Clarifying questions? Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I just have clarifying questions for things that came up. One, I met with the chief about the use of the FLOCK data, and I believe our FLOCK data was available online for how it is used and just more information, but I was curious if there's an opportunity to get that information again, just to, I want to honor the concerns that have been raised. I know that the use is different in Denver than it is here based on what I've been told, and I just want to, again, get a little bit more clarity on the concerns that community raised that weren't on the agenda right now but are certainly something that our community is very concerned around. The other is the, somebody mentioned mental health support at the library. I think I misheard her. Maybe the recommendation was getting more services at the library for the seniors and mental health support? And I just was curious about that because I hadn't heard anything about it and I just was curious about the mental health services for our aging and elder community members.
As to the FLOCK data, I will say that I'm happy to send over. We have certainly received some inquiries about that. We have sent some information to council previously. Happy to send that over again. As to what services the library is currently given, I will say that I do not, I'm not up to speed anymore now that the library is its own district.
Oh, right.
But certainly I'm happy to send the inquiry to David Farnin and see what he sends us in response.
Okay, wonderful. And then lastly, the Ninth Street. So as somebody who bikes all the time, I too have seen that Ninth Street, you know, raceway if it were. So I just want to lift up and co-sign, yes, I am, I too am interested in some of those speeding. And I would say that, and I also, I don't live as closely to N-Car as I do now, but I just remember a lot of fancy-looking speeding cars up at the top sometimes and just in general, any kind of drag racy type things that are happening. I'm just hearing a little bit more about it. So just was curious if somebody could look into that and see if it's.
Yeah. I know the chief has had, in the past, we have had complaints and we have observed ourselves drag racing at different parts of the city. Certainly that is not something we condone, we permit. I know the chief and many folks in PD have been clamping down wherever we see that. I don't know particularly if Ninth Street, what in particular interventions they have had, but certainly happy to follow up with council.
Awesome. And then lastly, and this is, you can start my 30 seconds now. I just want to say that, once again, anything that distracts from the message of peace, of transnational liberation is a misstep. And again, I apologize for any, anything that distracts from that. I also just want to say in response to my fellow colleague about the Holocaust and who can compare what, I just want to honor, it's not a comparison. It's a continuum. It's not a comparison. It's a continuum. They learned it from us. They, the Nazis, learned their methods from us. And it is important that we always honor the continuum and that, but this is my professional work, not work here. And so I will remain and keep it there. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. I'm not seeing any other hands, so that's going to bring us to the end of open comment. So our next item is an executive session, which we have to perform some actions here to go into. So Alicia, if we can go to item 1A, please.
Yes, sir. Item 1A on tonight's agenda is the consideration of a motion to call an executive session of the city council on Thursday, August 7, 2025, as authorized by subsection 24-6-4024E of the Colorado Revised Statute, related to determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators, as well as CRS 24-6-4024B for a conference between city council and the attorneys for the city for the purpose of receiving legal advice concerning said negotiations.
Oh, sorry. I got more that I have to read into the record to make it up and up. Okay. So bear with me, everybody. There's a lot of words. The city manager and the city attorney have requested an executive session as authorized by 2464024E CRS, related to determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators concerning the Boulder Police Officers Association collective bargaining agreement, as well as CRS 2464024B for a conference between city council and the attorneys for the city for the purpose of receiving legal advice concerning said negotiations. The following provisions of the Colorado Open Meetings Act authorize an executive session to discuss this matter. The purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real personal or other property interest, CRS 246424A. Conferences with an attorney for the city to receive legal advice on specific legal questions, CRS 246424B. Determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators, CRS 246424E. And consideration of documents protected by the mandatory nondisclosure provisions of the Colorado Open Records Act, CRS 246424G. This topic announcement provides as much detail as possible without compromising the purpose for which the executive session is authorized. So now I will entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to CRS Section 246424 for a conference with the city manager and attorney for the city for the purpose previously stated.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. A motion for executive session must pass by two-thirds of the quorum council members present. If we can have a roll call, please, Ms. Alicia.
Yes, sir. We'll start the roll call for item 1A regarding the executive session with council member Shuhart.
Yes.
Spear.
Yes.
Wallack.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Bronquet.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fulcrans.
Yes.
And council member Marquess.
Yes.
Item 1A is hereby passed unanimously.
Okay. The motion has passed. The council will now recess and reconvene immediately an executive session to discuss the matter previously stated for the purposes previously stated.
Session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Taisha Adams, Erin Brockett, Matt Benjamin, Lauren Folkerts, Tina Marquess, Ryan Schuhardt, Nicole Spear, Mark Wallach, Tara Wiener, Nur Rivera Vandermeide, Chris Meschuck, Roberto Ramirez, Laurel Witt, David Bell, Megan Pierce, and Charlotte Husky. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discretion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns for the record now. Seeing none, I will now continue the August 5, 2005 meeting agenda. And our next thing to work on is the consent agenda, please, Alicia.
Yes, sir, thank you. Our consent agenda is item number three on tonight's agenda, and it consists of items 3A through 3E.
Thanks so much. So on one of these items is consent agenda, item 3D, which is consideration of the arbitration report and a motion regarding the Boulder Police Officers Association, BPOA, declared impasse on economic issues during negotiation of the collective bargaining agreement for the 2026 contract year. This item requires us to pick which motion to proceed with. So we have a couple of options that are in our packet, and Roberto, can you remember, remind us what options A and B are?
Thank you, Mayor. Roberto Ramirez, Deputy City Attorney. Option A is the 4%. Option B is the 6%.
Very good. So I will look to someone from council to propose which motion they would like to proceed with on this item.
I'm going to, wait, go ahead.
Mark, go ahead.
I'm going to move that we adopt option A.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Tara's got a second. Okay, so we've, and actually, this was, we did not yet need a motion, so I apologize. So you're proposing option A, the 4% increase. Would anyone like to oppose, to propose a different option? Okay, seeing no one, then, option A looks to be the selection of city council, since no one's proposed anything else. So I would now entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Now is the time for the motion, with the motion including option A from the staff memorandum for item 3D. Do you want to go again, Mark?
I would move that we adopt the consent agenda, then, including option A.
For item 3D, great.
I second, but I have a question. Could you tell me when I could speak about the ROPA? Is that now, or is that?
No, 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 we'll get to that later.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
Thanks for asking.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Mark, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, I, I like, I believe a number of members of this council would like to give maximum raises to our first responders, particularly the police, but we are in a very constrained economic environment, which is becoming clearer by the day, and as a consequence, this going beyond what I have proposed as a, as a motion is simply not tenable for the city at this time. And so that is the basis on which I've suggested we adopt the 4% increase.
Thank you for that. Tara, did you want to speak to your second?
Yes. As you all know, I've historically been very supportive of our police, and I continue to be. They do an amazing job, but we have to keep in mind that, first of all, 4% is a raise, and that we aren't in extremely physically constrained environment, and we have to do what is fiscally responsible, in my opinion, so I think we should go with 4%.
Very good. Did anyone else want to speak to this before we go to vote? Seeing no hands raised. Can we get a roll call vote, please, on the consent agenda, Alicia?
Yes, sir. We'll start the consent agenda roll call vote for items 3A through 3A, which will include the adoption of option A with Councilmember Spear.
Yes.
Wallach?
Aye.
Wiener?
Yes.
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Benjamin?
Yes.
Mayor Brockett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts?
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus?
Yes.
And Schuhardt?
Yes.
The consent agenda items A through E are hereby adopted unanimously.
Thanks very much. Yes, Lauren?
I wanted to speak to another item on our consent agenda, item E, regarding the sale of the dairy. I just wanted to thank Nurya and Melissa. It is a testament to both of you that you could turn this sort of year-long, years-long negotiation over a dollar a year lease into such fruitful conversations that we're able to get to a place that benefits both our organizations. I strongly believe that the tenant of a building is the best long, you know, provides the best maintenance, and that this really puts the dairy in a really positive place that I'm excited for, and also, at the same time, reduces some risk and cost in the long term for the city. I will miss being on the board, because I am currently the council representative to the dairy board, and as this goes forward, my position on that board will end, but I have really enjoyed my time with your group and all of the work that you do. Thank you so much.
Thanks for that, Lauren. That was very well said. I'll just chime in real quick that I was also a dairy board rep one time and got to see how hard that board and that organization works. It's a cornerstone cultural institution in the city of Boulder, and so excited for this next chapter of owning the building themselves, and so congratulations, and I can't wait for the next show. All right, so that finishes out our consent agenda. So we will now go to our call-up check-ins, of which there are three. So our first one, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. Our call-up check-ins are item number four on the agenda, and we have item 4A, and it is the Community and Environmental Assessment Process, known as the SEEP, for the Folsom Street Safety Improvement Projects.
Great. Does, do any council members have any questions or comments or desire to call this one up? I saw Ryan and then Tina.
I just wanted to thank staff for working so hard on this, and certainly support moving it forward as is without further discussion. As one of the commenters earlier pointed out, this has been going on for more than 10 years, and the council approximately a decade ago said, this is the kind of thing in principle that we should be doing, we just need to be strategic and thoughtful, and I think we've done more than that. So thank you, and look forward to moving forward.
Tina?
Yeah, I just wanted to commend the design of this particular area, and I think one of the emails we received from Better Boulder thought about this redesign as a model redesign, and I concur, just the, the way it's configured and the way it looks is really aesthetic. My only concern is, which, and I'm definitely supportive of this redesign, is just to ensure that we have the funds for the maintenance, so it looks like the designs. I think this is a citywide issue that we're talking about in our constrained environment. How do we maintain things the way they were designed, so they continue to look beautiful and inviting and provide a great experience for people who are enjoying downtown or riding a bike on Folsom? So I hope that we can pay attention to those details and what the, what it looks like to experience our city. So that's it.
Matt?
Yeah, I want to echo Ryan and really Tina's compliments to staff. I think we can say that CAN is rolling down the street pretty, pretty well, and, at least somebody got that one, appreciate it. Hey, see, you can lie, oh, nice. You know, I'm hopeful that by redesigning this, this actually ends the PTSD that Folsom 2.1 had created, or 1.0, 1.0 had created. And, and I just think this has been a great job, and I think it shows that we can do great work quickly, and I hope that that is sort of where we keep leveraging going forward. I know as we really got our feet under us, as we sort of shifted to CAN, this sort of shows that we can move quickly and do good work. I do have just one piece I wanted to sort of make sure that we highlight is, you know, one of the major Boulder institutions is the Boulder Boulder, and Folsom is a, is a major artery for that, and so just as we think about all this great design, just making sure that we accommodate what the Boulder Boulder is and will become in future years, and that, and that it becomes part of this design in many ways. So I think that's something we can look forward to. But anyways, great job, and look forward to seeing this come to fruition.
Great. Not seeing any other hands, I'll just say a couple words. Just huge thanks to the transportation department. You all have hit it out of, out of the park again. Tried to think of an alternative transportation metaphor for hitting it out of the park, I couldn't come up with one. But another phenomenal design, and I appreciate your approach to being creative with the hybrid designs and considerations. So very excited. The Folsom was the F-word we couldn't say for a long time, and I'm really looking forward to seeing this move forward as funding becomes available. Plus one to what you said about the Boulder Boulder, that's a great community partner and organization. We want to make sure that it works great for that event as well. And also, a big thank you to Councilmember Benjamin, and then Councilmember Rachel Friend for putting the CAN initiative together back a few years ago now. So very excited to see it moving forward. All right, so I have not heard anyone opine that we should call this up, so I think we're done with that item.
Thank you, sir. Item 4B on tonight's agenda is the Site Review Amendment and Use Review to allow the existing structure at 1836 19th Street to be used as a single-family detached dwelling unit in the RH2 zoning district, and to amend the existing PUD to maintain the existing rear deck. This is reviewed under cases numbers LUR 20-22-00044 and LUR 2023-00010.
Thanks. Any questions or comments or desire to call this one up? I saw Matt and Tara.
Yes, I would like to see us call this up. You know, this is an interesting thing, is I've gotten to learn more about it, and it just is, it's sort of, it's a strange situation that we've got ourselves in, and I think we need to give it some review and really give it some due diligence, which maybe it hasn't quite gotten yet. So I think it's appropriate here to call this up.
Very good. Tara?
Yeah, I agree, we should call it up. I watched the planning board meeting, which is becoming one of my new hobbies, and I have to say that some of the remarks I agree with, it is a bit of what was somebody called Casca- It is a bit of what was somebody called Kaskasque-esque?
Kafkaesque.
See, I shouldn't have even tried that word here. I'm a little too stressed. Kafkaesque overreach, I would call it that, or government overreach. So I really would like us to bring it forth as a discussion and see what we have to say about it.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues on this one. So did you want to make a motion to that effect or, Mark, did you want to speak to it before?
Just briefly, I, I also watched the planning board meeting and I found it a bit strange, to say the least, in terms of how they approached this property and the seeming unwillingness to come to a reasonable solution that protects the owner of the property as well as our values and interests. And I just thought this was a little extreme, so I'd like to call it up too.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to call this up. Item 4B.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Tina, seconds. All in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous, nine zero. So we're calling that one up. Next, please, Alicia.
Yes, sir. Item 4C is the Concept Plan Review for the Proposed Redevelopment of the NAROPA Campus at 2130 Arapaho Avenue with two new buildings containing approximately 133 residential units in a variety of one to five bedroom layouts. The proposal would require a Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map Amendment as well as a rezoning from public to residential high five. The proposal would also require a height modification to allow for the building to exceed the three-story, three-story 35-foot height limit. The proposed design would maintain the existing historic Lincoln Hall building. This is reviewed under case number LUR 2025-00033.
Question, comments or desire to call this one up? Mark?
Yes, I would like to, just given the size of the project, its complexity, the importance of the location and the, just the overall significance of the project, I, I think we ought to have a little bit of a review of it. And so, yes, I'd like to call it up.
Okay. Tara?
I don't know that I necessarily want to call it up, but I am, I studied it and I went there and to me, the question is really RH5 versus RH1 and I feel that I'm, I like what planning board said here. There were some comments that said that they're not positive that RH5 is necessarily appropriate. They would need a strong argument to believe that that is the way to go and I agree with them. So where do we go from here? What's my next step?
Well, I would say, so I personally don't necessarily need to call it up, but I would give the feedback more that RH5 would be the appropriate zone. So I might look to Roberto, the city attorney. Could we do like a straw poll in terms of whether council would favor the, the lower density or the higher density alternative or is that too much to do in the, just the discussion of a call-up?
No, you can certainly do that.
Okay. So what, and let me just say that I think that, I thought that planning board and staff had some excellent comments about revisions that were important for the project to improve it, so I thought those were great. But I think it would be helpful for council to say, would, does council support more of the lower density RH1 alternative or the higher density RH5 alternative?
Can I ask a process question?
Sure.
So if we didn't call it up and understanding that planning board, they had four members who wanted to explore what the density should be and I think staff concurred with that. My understanding is if we didn't do anything at this point, that there would be a process with staff and then with planning board to think about the density and make a recommendation as well as some of the other items that they brought up like the cutout on Arapaho so that we don't necessarily need to weigh in on that now, but we can let more process and more study from staff happen.
So I might invite planning director Brad Mueller up to the podium, if you don't mind, Brad. In terms of the process, is the next step submitting for a site review approval when things are pretty baked or is there going to be some additional back and forth between the applicant and the board before they get to that point?
Yeah, good evening, council member Brad Mueller, Director of Planning and Development Services. So you would be seeing it only at that next site review and we've got Chandler, the planner who's working on this, available too, to keep me honest. Number one, I will say it is just concept plan now, but straw poll is also good information, so we're happy to follow whatever direction council's interested in this evening.
I think that they're going to, they're going to do a lot of work based on the feedback that they're getting on the concept plan. So I think it would be helpful for council to indicate which direction we'd prefer to see them go. So if folks don't mind, yes, go ahead.
So if, if we're about to, to poll for the five versus one, is there an option that we can also have for letting planning board work out the process with staff?
Yeah, sure.
Can that also be one? Okay, thank you.
So thanks for that suggestion. So I'm going to straw poll three options, the lower density RH1, the higher density RH5, or let the applicant work it out with staff going forward.
Can I ask another clarifying question on process?
Sure.
I wasn't thinking that we'd be doing straw polls on a call-up and giving direction in that way, so, oh wow, okay.
It just got very bright.
So.
Can, can we turn those lights back down?
And I also didn't, so when I was engaging with staff a little bit on this, I wasn't planning to make a density recommendation because of my guess is our straw poll will be taken as direction. So I'm just not real confident about whether, so my preference is to not call it up and let staff do the, go through that process with planning board, but I'm, I'm one voice.
Can I call? Can I call a quick?
Yeah, I'll just say that would be option three.
Okay, because I never, that's always what I wanted to do. I'm not prepared to make that big of a decision. I was, I was only remarking that we should think about it, so.
Totally fair. So in that, and if you feel that way, then go for option C, which is to let them move forward. So I'll go ahead and straw poll. Option one is lower density RH1. Option two, a preference for a higher density RH5. And option three is send it back and let staff and the applicant work it through. So all in favor of option one, raise your hand. Zero hands. All in favor of option two?
Wow.
I'm the lone person. And then all in favor of option three. And that's eight, so there's a overwhelming support for option three of letting staff work it through with the applicant, so. Now I'll come back to it. Having said that, is there any desire to now call it up? Mark, you mentioned wanting to, did you want to make a motion?
Do we get any opportunity to, to review what staff and the applicant work out?
I don't think so, but Brad, is that?
Again, Brad Mueller. So it would just be the traditional point at which you'd be looking at the site review and the zoning.
Okay.
Could we get an IP with some information about what staff and the applicant work out when they do so?
I have to turn to the attorneys on that because it is quasi-judicial. I don't know that we'd be doing that for a quasi-judicial item. Bless you.
Thank you. That is correct because of the nature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Tara?
Sorry. Just explain to me one more time. So let's say it comes back and I was like, oh, that's too big. I don't like it. Let's say I make believe I say that.
We would have to call up the site review.
Okay, like we do everything.
Yes, yeah. That would be our, so we will see this again if they move forward with the project and we would see it at the time of the site review, whether planning board approved or denied or approved it with conditions. We would then have the chance to call up that decision if we felt like we wanted to go in a different direction.
I'm content with that.
Okay. So then no motion to call this one up? All right, so we're not calling this one up either. And that moves us forward to our public hearing, item five, please.
All right, thank you, sir. Our public hearings are, our public hearing is item five on tonight's agenda and we have two items under consideration. The first item is the second reading and consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance 8710, submitting to the electors of the city of Boulder at the general municipal coordinated election to be held Tuesday, November 4, 2025, the question of, without raising additional taxes, extending the existing 0.3% community, culture, resilience, and safety sales and use tax beyond the current expiration date of December 31, 2036, in perpetuity, to build and maintain capital improvement projects and use up to 10% of the resulting tax revenue to fund a grant pool for nonprofit organization projects to be authorized as a voter-approved revenue change, specifying the form of the ballot and other election procedures and setting forth those related details. And our second item, if desired, is the second reading and consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance 8711, submitting to the electors of the city of Boulder at the general municipal coordinated election to be held on Tuesday, November 4, 2025, the question of authorizing the increase of debt to build and maintain capital improvements with the proceedings thereof to be used for capital improvement projects in the city of Boulder as set forth in the ballot, specifying the form of the ballot and other election procedures and setting forth related details.
That was a mouthful. Thanks, Alicia.
I was just going to say that, Mayor. And last time we saw this, council was June 26, 2025, when you gave us some direction and as the item moved forward, I will pass this on to our budget officer, Charlotte Husky.
Good evening, council. Good to be here with you this evening. Charlotte Husky, budget officer for the city of Boulder. I am here to present tonight on the 2025 ballot measure in front of city council for consideration on the community, culture, resilience, and safety tax permanent extension. The ballot measure, as Alicia read out, includes ordinance 8710 for city council consideration attachment A that would place the 2025 ballot measure before the voters without raising taxes to extend the 0.3% community, culture, resilience, or CCRS tax in perpetuity to fund capital improvement projects identified in the ordinance. The ordinance also provides for a 10% of the proceeds of the tax extension to fund a grant pool supporting nonprofit organizations and capital improvement projects for nonprofit organizations. Ordinance 8711, or attachment B, would allow the debt or the principal amount to be increased up to 262 million for capital improvement projects funded by this tax. The ballot measure in front of you all this evening is the work of coordinated efforts over the past year and a half of the work of the long-term financial strategy. And so this is in support of the multi-year ballot measure framework that staff has worked on also in partnership with the Financial Strategy Committee. City council first indicated support for the multi-year ballot measure strategy during the May 2024 ballot measures study session last year. The multi-year ballot measure strategy and framework is a two-year approach within the city's long-term financial strategy to look at proposed tax ballot measures for 2025 and 2026. The Financial Strategy Committee has provided staff policy guidance for this framework, in particular for 2025, focusing on taking care of what we have, prioritizing flexibility of funding, recognizing the challenges of restricted funding, coordination of tax ballot measures with our broader city financial planning, including alternative funding mechanisms and outcome-based budgeting as part of budgeting for resilience and equity, and distributing the tax burden more equitably. Throughout the work of the long-term financial strategy and the multi-year ballot measure framework, city council considered two ballot measure options, including both the 0.3% CCRS sales and use tax as well as the public realm or parks and public improvement property tax. Nuria mentioned earlier that our statistically valid polling survey that we brought to city council June 26, just a month ago, demonstrated the highest support for the CCRS permanent extension among likely voters within this survey, the initial vote being 64% approval. After that meeting and during that meeting, council provided direction to staff to move forward with the permanent extension of the 0.3% CCRS tax for this November's ballot. The CCRS tax extension would provide the permanent extension of the existing CCRS tax for an estimated 13 to 15 million annually to support critical capital infrastructure needs and maintenance needs for the city's portfolio and reserve 10% of the revenues for nonprofit capital projects. That's consistent with the ballot language today. Our existing tax for CCRS that was passed in 2021 has supported critical capital infrastructure projects so far and those planned in the, in the near term. Those include the completion of Fire Station 3, replacements of Central Avenue Bridge and Violet Bridge as part of the Primos Park development in North Boulder, improvements to Civic Area, the Civic Area Park, renovations and retrofits at the East Boulder Community Center, acquisition of all of the city's streetlights from Excel, and multimodal transportation projects along 30th Street and 28th Street, among others. The 2025 CCRS tax extension would provide enhanced flexibility for debt financing beginning in January of 2026 and additional annual revenue beginning in 2027. It's important to note here that the CCRS tax extension would support flexibility of funding and support the, the critical backlog of capital infrastructure in the city's portfolio and maintenance needs as well. Included in the two ordinances that are in front of council this evening are the categories of types of capital projects in ordinance 8710. This is aligning and uplifting the categories of projects that were included in the statistically valid polling survey that we brought forward to city council at the June 26 meeting. The categories of types of capital projects incorporated into the ballot would include flexibility and such as language, including roads, paths, bike lanes, and sidewalk enhancements, recreation center renovations and replacements, snow and ice response, parks and playground refurbishments, fire and police station renovation and replacement, critical bridge replacement, and open space trail and trailhead improvements. In ordinance 8711, city council is considering increasing the debt authorization up to 262 million. This is our current principal amount that we have in our existing taxes, 110 million. This would increase up to 262 and provide flexibility for financing across a 30-year horizon. Right now, we are limited to, to 10-year, to a 10-year horizon based on the term of the tax. As part of the work with our staff planning, we always perform a careful consideration and balance between annual revenues coming into the fund and annual debt service payments. And so we would look to, to support a blend of capital infrastructure projects with smaller infrastructure and maintenance projects as well with this extension. Additional capacity, debt capacity above our planned issuances within the current six-year CIP, so the 2025 to 2030 CIP, Capital Improvement Program, is planned for the East Boulder Community Center, Civic Area, and Fire Station 2. And with that, happy to take any questions from council, public hearing, and then we have suggested motion language when ready.
Clarifying questions from council members. I had Matt, Mark, and Tina.
Cool. Thank you for this update on where we're at. It's nice to sort of get to this place. Question I have kind of references to, I think, slide number six. I just want to be clear that the, the projects we have planned out currently that we've specified only go to about a time horizon of about the year 2030 in the CIP as those projects are specified. What we haven't laid out yet in either the discussion or what we're maybe considering putting onto voters is what are the things that we might be funding starting after 2030? Because I know that there's one, a number of critical needs that we have. I know one in particular is like the South Boulder Rec Center, which is crumbling before our eyes have just closed right now because of the critical maintenance needs. So is it fair to say that projects like that would be considered post 2030, given the time horizon of the money and the, the perpetuity nature of this grant? And is there a process in which to give voters some sense of those projects so they know what they're voting for in the future rather than just sort of a blank check?
Thank you for the question, council member. So we have intentionally looked to provide enhanced flexibility as part of the policy guidance received from the Financial Strategy Committee, which is consistent with the Blue Ribbon Commission reports from 2000 which is consistent with the Blue Ribbon Commission reports from 2008 and 2010. And so the categories of types of capital projects provided here are to be able to provide us that flexibility. As part of the annual budget development process, we look to incorporate and include additional projects or changes to capital projects as part of that annual capital planning that we perform. And so that would come forward as part of our annual budget development process with City Council for City Council consideration on an annual basis.
Okay, I'm not sure. I hear the answer. Maybe I didn't, maybe it's not the answer I was looking for, which is fine, too.
I see. I see our Deputy City Manager.
The real core is the voters want to know, when they ask for perpetuity, these projects have been in the queue, what's next? There's something to look forward to. This is an investment they're making in the future. I know we don't want to say a specific project because that's more than five years out, but we could at least be pointing to some things that are critical needs that give confidence to the voters that this money is headed to the things they want.
Yeah, happy to, China. And I'm Chris Maschek, Deputy City Manager. And I think, Matt, the question that you're asking is a really good one. And there's a combination of things. And I think, as Charlotte referenced, in the annual capital planning we do, while what's in the capital budget is only the next six years, we're thinking well beyond that. So if you're in utilities, they're looking 20 years out. For many of our departments, they have done that long-range planning, what we used to call master plans. So we have some of that information. As we're changing the way we do that process, we're going to be revising it, but there's lots of info out there. So to your point, we know all of our rec centers need work, our public safety building needs work. This building sadly needs work. The air conditioning doesn't work in half of it. So there's lots in there. And I think, as Charlotte described, while there is lots of capital needs, the ones that are in the such-as list in the ballot language, one are ones that we know for sure we're going to fund that are probably going to continue beyond the five years of the current CIP and are also ones that we heard from the community are high priorities for them. So as Charlotte described, while the tax is flexible, and so as the needs of the city evolve, this extension would help fund those, we also know these are ones that are top of the list. Does that help?
Yeah, I just, those are general, and people can read between the lines. I'd love to give them a little more of a specific carrot, but I get why we perhaps don't. But if we could, that would be great.
Got it.
I just had a little detailed question on the bottom of the list of categories of types of capital projects. It mentions open space, trail, and trailhead improvements. Do we generally do open space improvements through these general financing mechanisms? Or do we also use the dedicated tax primarily?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. The majority of the open space capital improvement program is supported by the Open Space Fund. There are other funding sources that have, in the past, supported capital improvement projects, such as the Lottery Fund for open space, trail, and trailhead improvements.
Yeah, I just, just kind of a clarifying question around our strategy. So one of the reasons that we are struggling a bit right now is because we didn't tend to build in repair and replacement costs into the budget over the decades when we built all this infrastructure and everything. But that is being included now, right? So that just in 25 or 50 years, borrowing more increases in construction costs and things like that, that money is being built in. So presumably, that council wouldn't have to go back to voters and ask for another 0.3% increase or something like that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Brian.
Just one question. I've heard some members of the community pose the question. With federal tax and service cuts happening, will the city be looking to pass those new costs or burdens on to us as residents? And so I'd just like to ask, does this come from a response to, you know, recent events with the federal situation? Or is it more of a longer-term process? Or can you speak to that?
It is one, it is a process that we have been working on for a year and a half for that development. So it is certainly part of a broader, comprehensive, and holistic planning picture. And it does provide the city enhanced flexibility to be able to look into the future for planning purposes that might, the city might be impacted. But it certainly has been part of our planning efforts for the past year and a half.
Great, thank you.
All right, not seeing any other questions. We will now go to the public hearing. We have two speakers, Lynn Segal and Rob Smoke. Each of them will get three minutes to speak. And we just, we do have the requirement to speak to the topic at hand. So our first speaker is Lynn Segal.
Mayor, I do not see Lynn or Rob online tonight.
Okay, then Rob Smoke's turn. Oh, no, you didn't see Robert either. Okay, sorry. I was reading. Ah, he's in person. That's why it wasn't virtual. You're up, yes.
Am I on? Okay. My name is Rob. A lot of echo here, huh? Is that supposed to be there? All right. My name is Rob Smoke. I live in Boulder. And I guess, you know, having me as the last speaker for a hearing plus the open comment is kind of like when you get a scratch ticket for $2 and you get a dollar back, a lottery ticket. It's not a big win. But the reason I say that is because I think, you know, the issue of a 0.3% tax isn't that, you know, sales tax on people can be viewed as a regressive way of raising money because people who have less of it still have to buy the same carton of milk or food for their kids and so forth. So I think even if you are putting this on the ballot, that's something to keep in mind for the future because Boulder does have a very high sales tax right now. And even though it doesn't look like a burden to add another 0.3%, it can be a burden. I'm also concerned about the use of language here. You know, you include a term, resilience. And, you know, it's so ambiguous. People could think resilience is almost anything. If you say public safety, well, you know, I can probably figure out that it's fire and police, you know, something like that. When you start throwing in words like culture and resilience, what are they trying to fund? I mean, and they're asking, you know, you're asking. So people are going along, and people are probably almost certainly going to pass this and give an approval to it. But I still think there are a lot of questions. Personally, in my life, when it comes to resilience, part of it is just coming to consciousness about some of the issues that we've unfortunately avoided here over the last year and a half. And I think if you're taking away meetings where, you know, regular meeting, like we didn't have a regular meeting in July, even though Article 2, Section 9, Paragraph 1 says that council is required to have at least one regular meeting per month.
So the public hearing is on the tax purpose.
I've gotten answers on that. But I think when you're talking about resilience, resilience means working with the public in a forthright manner, in a truthful manner. And when you take away open comment, you wind up with a situation like we had tonight, where people were getting very upset. And it's a topic they feel passionate about. Thank you for giving me your time.
Thank you. All right, that brings the public hearing to a close. So I'll look to Council now, if anyone wants to lead off. Yes, Nicole.
I was just going to do a clarifying question, which is that, can I, is that okay?
Sure.
That this isn't, this is an existing tax, right? So it's not adding, per se, to people's taxes if it passes. People's sales tax will not go up next year.
That's correct.
Lauren, clarifying question.
And in our long-term financial strategy, we are trying to look at ways to shift away from sales tax. Is that true?
That's accurate.
Thank you.
Yes, Tisha.
Considering the regressive tax, are there any in the projects that were listed, I didn't notice any preference or additional considerations to ensure that those who are, again, paying a higher percentage of their income towards this, I'm just curious if that's a consideration when we're talking about projects and project criteria? Thank you.
Part of the, for city projects, we develop those as part of the annual capital improvement program. The 10% amount that goes to support nonprofit organizations and capacity building and capital infrastructure investments was intentionally developed to be able to provide a range of funding support across organizations in the 2021 passing. And that is, would be, would continue to be supported by that 10% of revenues with this extension of the 2025 CCRS tax.
Okay, so it sounds like we do have 10%. By the other 90%, there's nothing in, per se. I did see Primo Park, though. And so again, I just want to honor that some of those. Again, I just want to honor that this is a regressive tax that we're using and just making sure that those who are paying a bigger percentage of their taxes to this work are being compensated. So that's good to know. But there is no necessarily standard. And those projects don't necessarily require racial equity review as a part of their, a part of their work. It is.
I just wonder if, Nury, if you might speak to how we interweave that throughout this and other work.
Yep, we do use a racial equity instrument on different criteria. And some of our capital improvements, I will say, that we also have to use criticality. There are some, there's a variety of criteria that goes into some of the decision-making on timing, certainly public safety, public health. But we also take a look at other criteria as the community that it's serving. So we do use the instrument as part of that, and we use other factors, such as, again, criticality and safety issues. So it is weaved into some of those decision-makings.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess where I'm going with this is considering, again, for these types of things, I'm hopeful that it's not necessarily a nice-to-have, but something that really is required. And I just look to Joe and the water team, who continue to exemplify how that tool is not just lip service, but is actually leading to policy change and making right what we've done wrong. Thank you.
All right, anybody want to add additional comment or a motion even?
Me. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Nicole.
I saw Nicole first.
Yeah, I did want to make a motion. And I also, well, I'll have a chance to talk after I make my motion.
We are going to need two motions.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And you want me to do both or just the first one?
Just one.
Just first one, okay. Motion, I move to adopt ordinance 8710 submitting to the electors of the City of Boulder at the general municipal coordinated election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2025, without raising additional taxes. Extend the existing Community Culture Resilience and Safety Sales and Use Tax of 0.3% beyond the current expiration date of December 31, 2036, in perpetuity to fund capital improvement projects and use up to 10% of tax revenue to fund a grant pool for nonprofit organization projects as a voter-approved revenue change, specifying the form of the ballot and other election procedures and setting forth related details.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the finance team for bringing this forward and for all the hard work that's gone into figuring out how to address not just the remaining needs that we have from our, I think it's almost $400 million backlog of capital improvements, but really thinking about, you know, how we can do this into the future. And I also just wanted to thank the folks in the community who have been supporting this tax already and who were open to it as a way to, or open to continuing it into perpetuity as a way to help fund a lot of our critical infrastructure needs. So I look forward to this being on the ballot, hopefully.
Thanks, Tara. Did you want to speak?
Only that many, many years ago, I was on the CCRS Working Group way back when. And so this is extremely meaningful to see all that we've been able to do with this tax.
Roberto, did you want to say something?
I did, thank you. Before we go any further on this motion, just want to make sure that what you said is proper. You actually said November 5 and not November 4, so. So if you want to clarify your motion for purposes of the second.
I would like to clarify that, thank you. November 4, 2025, not November 5.
Good catch. I didn't hear that at all.
I can assure you that was not me.
Thank you, Steph member, who got that. Okay, great. So we've had a motion, a second. We can go ahead and go to a vote then. Alicia, roll call, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. We'll start the roll call for the adoption of ordinance 8710 with Councilmember Wallach.
Absolutely, yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquess.
Yes.
Shoe Hard.
Yes.
And Spear.
Yes.
Ordinance 8710 is hereby adopted unanimously.
Thanks so much. Are you on a roll, Nicole? Do you want to?
I move to adopt ordinance 8711 submitting to the electors of the City of Boulder at the general municipal coordinated election to be held on Tuesday, November 4, 2025. The question to authorize the increase of debt of the city to fund capital improvements with the proceeds thereof to be used for capital improvement projects in the City of Boulder as set forth in the ballot, specifying the form of the ballot and other election procedures and setting forth related details.
Do we have a second? Okay, that's a second. Did you want to say anything additional?
I don't need to say anything else.
Mark.
I think everything has been said.
Very good. Let's have a vote then, please, Alicia. Roll call.
Thank you, sir. We'll start the roll call for the adoption of ordinance 8711 with Councilmember Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquess.
Yes.
Shoe Hard.
Yes.
Spear.
Yes.
And Wallach.
Again, yes.
Ordinance 8711 is hereby adopted unanimously.
Fantastic. All right, well, Charlotte, thanks so much to you and your team for bringing this forward. And we look forward to seeing this on the ballot here before too long. Appreciate it.
I don't feel good, so I'm going to go home.
Okay, feel better, Tara. We have one agenda item left, if we could, please, Alicia.
Yes, sir. Our last agenda item on tonight's agenda is item number 6A from matters from the City Manager. And it is the review of the Dr. Cog Regional Housing Needs Assessment to comply with Senate Bill 24-174, that is the Sustainable Affordable Housing Assistance.
Yes, I'll look to the City Manager.
Thanks so much for that. And as Jay gets situated here as we start our presentation, I just want to thank Councilmember Spear. She's been our representative at Dr. Cog for all the work that's gone there. But this is great work. This is work that we are required to bring forward for feedback, but certainly terrific work that Dr. Cog has done in figuring out what housing needs are across the region. So hopefully, I have bought Jay enough time to sort of get his presentation up and ready as we figure out what the data says. Jay, lovely.
Found the cursor. Good evening. Jay Sognit with Housing and Human Services. And I am here tonight with a very brief agenda item. So basically, we'll just give you a bit of the reason why we're here tonight, go through a couple of the highlights from the assessment, and then talk about some next steps. So a little bit of background. The reason we're here is Senate Bill 24-174 that requires that jurisdictions complete a housing needs assessment. Fortunate for us, Dr. Cog, the Denver Regional Council of Governments, was already well underway and pretty much completed a housing needs assessment. was already well underway and pretty much completed a housing needs assessment for the entire region. So they did quite a bit of stakeholder engagement over the last two years. There's a little bit of graphic to show you that. They even came to the city's housing advisory board in February, which was fascinating. And what the state determined also this year was that this analysis could be used to satisfy the requirements of the Senate bill. All that's required is that we submit comments from council by September 12th, and that will ensure that we are competitive for future available funding from the state. So no action by council is required, just a public meeting. So a little bit of what it is, hopefully, none of this is a surprise, but Dr. Cog embarked on this really at the request of participating jurisdictions. They found that housing was definitely better addressed at the regional level and asked Dr. Cog to start this process. So the intent is to provide a shared data-driven foundation to understand how much housing the region needs, but more importantly, sort of where and what price points, all in the hopes of guiding a future housing plan. So one thing to keep in mind, so we can quibble about the methodology, the numbers, the consultants who developed the report are not here to defend themselves. So, but the precise numbers really are not as important as really to understand the scale and the scope. So I just really wanted to emphasize that. So a few of the basics, this is what shouldn't be a surprise. So the region experienced pretty significant growth in population without a commensurate increase in housing production. That resulted in very low vacancy rates and median home sales prices that had basically three times faster than incomes. Over half of the households are cost-burdened or severely cost-burdened. And understanding the housing need, again, is just a good foundation for policymakers to address the overall housing supply and affordability challenges. So the analysis has several sub-markets or sub-regions, which is extremely helpful as we go along. Just keep in mind, the Boulder is in the north. So quite a bit of criteria goes, went into the analysis and the needs, its current and future populations, current and future employment, as well as factors around transportation, as well as housing. So this is the overall housing need, over half a million new units by 2050. They also did a 10-year horizon, which is 223,000 new homes. And that 223, the little sub-box breaks it out in terms of the current need and also the future need, which I think is helpful. And then fortunately, they broke it down by income levels. So specifically, what is the demand and what is the current supply? So the shaded box is the current supply at each of that income level, 0 to 50, 50 to 80, et cetera. And what this shows is that the greatest need is that 0 to 50%. And then fortunately, they also broke it down even further by sub-region. So you can see that that need at the 0 to 50% is pretty consistent across all the sub-regions. And then we'll show you Boulder. So again, Boulder, it shouldn't be a surprise as well. Really reinforces the investments that the City of Boulder has made in supporting in terms of funding as well as policy, particularly for households in that 0 to 50%. And then the second statistic, and then I'll be done. It has to do with housing burden. This is extremely useful, helps us understand how much people are paying of their annual income in rent. As you can see, the rent burden, if they're paying more than 30%, and they're severely burdened if they're paying more than 50%. So the north has some of the highest rates of being rent burden in the region. And then Boulder has some of the highest rates throughout the region. So the 30% and above has remained fairly stable, but the concern is that severely burdened. So there's lots more data points. I'm not going to go through them all, but again, consider this sort of a baseline guide of, for information for future planning efforts. So next steps, so we're going to submit comments, so you could provide those verbally tonight. You could send them to me or Kurt in writing. We'll submit those to Dr. Cog, and hopefully, that will satisfy a requirement for the Senate bill. The Senate bill also requires a housing action plan by January 1st, 2028. And the idea is to do that also regionally, recognizing the benefit. So we could either do that through Dr. Cog or continue our regional work in Boulder County through the Regional Housing Partnership. So there are different options. Staff will continue to explore that at this point. Happy to answer any questions you might have and any comments.
Thanks so much for that, Jay. Does council have any clarifying questions for Jay? Yeah, go ahead.
So I just want to make sure I'm not reading this incorrectly. When it, on page 310 of the packet, it indicated that there was no equity analysis completed and that there was no climate resiliency or sustainability either. I'm just, I don't, so not so much of a question for you, although in this moment, but more so for Nicole. I'm just kind of curious. I just have concerns about the reliability and validity of this report if there was no equity analysis or climate analysis.
So I don't, I don't know that that was referring to what Dr. Cog did, right?
That was from the report. It's on page. Can we go to page 310 then to find out? Do you mind? Sorry.
The cities, like for, my understanding of what that was in the packet for tonight was that that was reflecting that to do the presentation tonight on the report, there wasn't an equity analysis or climate analysis. Is that, it's not saying that there wasn't. It was, it was an incredibly inclusive process. If you want to go and see in the report, too, they engaged with a lot of different community groups, with the demographers, things like that. It wasn't, so that, when this was done, which was 23, 2023, there's certainly more, more work there. And I can ask, I'm happy to ask the Dr. Cog staff about it and get some more information if that's it, but I don't, anyway.
I think what you're referring to, and I think both is, both are right. In our template, in our new memo format, we have racial equity or equity considerations fiscal note. Is that what you're referring to? Because we did not do that.
No, if we, if, so one of the technical issues I'm having with our new system is sometimes the session expires and then I can't go back and get, is this something that's happening for you? Okay, so I can't find the page that I just had up to tell you where it was. And that's why I wrote down page 310. So if somebody can go to page 310, and is that, is that, that's the report from Echo something? So can somebody please, no, that's not the, oh, God, that's not the 310 from the PDF that I had to download because I couldn't do a search, word search find on the thing. So I'm so sorry. But anyway, my larger point is, is if you're telling me, if you're telling me, Nicole, that there was a thorough equity analysis, because again, a whole bunch of people in a focus group is not an equity analysis. That is a qualitative component. And they have the information to be able to tell us, you know, what are the, what are the conditions that led to such a large gap? Whether, right, like, that's A. B, I know that, and again, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm just going to make an assumption that the people making those decisions weren't made up of predominantly those that make the 0 to 50% income. And so I had the Comfort Class article from the, from the Atlantic recently that talked about people with generational wealth making decisions for the poor and how complicated that is. And so that's where I'm just coming in. And based on the conversations that, and the information that you have shared previously about Dr. Cog, I was surprised to see that component in the report. So that's where I was coming in. And it wasn't the same template from there. It was in there, in their report. I can't find it at this moment. But my larger point is, it's good to know that there is one. My larger concern just in general with this report, going back to our water conversation, when people say 2050, anything, I just, based on the meetings that I've had and conversations I've had with water people, it feels like we're having two different conversations. And so I'm just curious, too, from that, from that interdisciplinary perspective, how involved are the water people in this Dr. Cog report?
And also, I wonder, I know that we're allowed to submit comments and questions for a little while now. So I wonder if we can do some additional follow-up afterwards? Because I imagine Dr. Cog folks probably have some responses to some of these. So do you think we can, you know, put that in that pipeline? Okay, cool.
Can, may I?
No worries.
May I add one, one more thing? So the other piece of this is that this was sort of a first step work. So it's nice that it counts for the state requirement also, but it was the first, first step in getting to a regional housing strategy document, which is just about to get started. And so I, does this go to Dr. Cog? Does it go to the state? Who does, who do the comments go to? Who's collecting them?
They go to Dr. Cog.
They do, okay, yeah. Yeah. So that would be another thing there, right, to talk about that. And just yesterday, at our study session, I'm happy to send out the link as soon as it's posted. We were talking through the engagement and how to set up the beginning of the regional housing need, or sorry, not housing needs assessment, regional housing strategy, which is that second step, which I think is the part where we get into more of the details of who are, who's here, how are we meeting those needs and that sort of thing. So I think it'll come in more there, but it's a good time. It's the short version. It's a good time to make those comments.
Okay, thank you. And on that, while we're commenting, I just want to align that with the integrated water plan that we talked about, too. So I'm curious about the timing and if they're toggling with each other. Thank you.
Lauren?
Yeah, related to that, I think one of the things that's, I've been thinking about is how water availability might impact housing need because not all communities have the ability to expand in the same way. And so that likely might move around, you know, we might end up seeing more housing need or less housing needs kind of based on that. So is that something that they're going to consider or through these next steps?
Absolutely, because that's a requirement of the Senate bill.
Okay.
So the Senate bill has specific language about water availability and other infrastructure. It's just not as well-defined as to what the requirements are for housing needs analysis. But that next step by January, January 1st, 2028, it will have to be addressed, yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Jay. Just one question, and I apologize if this is too big and should have gotten into hotline. So feel free to, we can address it later. But I'm just thinking, in a, in a big picture, we've seen some of the data graphics around housing need and you know, the sort of overall message is we have a need for more housing. And I'm wondering if you're able to speak, perhaps from, you know, from Dr. Cog's perspective, what's on the table for, you know, if we meet the housing need, what do we get for that? Or conversely, what is at stake if we don't meet this housing need? Like, what are the big ideas about why we should care about this?
That's a great question. I like it.
And I'm sorry, this is like a pretty big question. So feel free to, we can put that into the comments to Dr. Cog if that's easier.
I can do that. I can take a stab. I mean, what, what I see the value of, I'm not sure about Dr. Cog or what the legislature's intent was. But there is no necessary, there isn't necessarily any penalty for not meeting it, nor is there any sort of reward. The reward is providing housing and having a more complete community, I think, is the actual reward. So it wasn't set up to be punitive or set up a reward system. But I'll definitely share that with Dr. Cog.
Thanks. And just to clarify, yeah, I think I was getting at more from Dr. Cog's perspective. What is, what is the need, what does meeting or not meeting the need mean from a, like a public service delivery standpoint? So I think it's, maybe it has a question more for Dr. Cog. And I know it's in the notes, but I just thought I'd try it for discretion. Thanks.
Great. I have one question for you, although maybe the winning community should get a sticker or something. So you met your goal. Great job. But my one question is, are we going to be using this as one of our inputs to the comprehensive plan process?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. That's what I wanted to hear. Anything else from anybody else? Not seeing anything else. Thanks very much, Jay. Appreciate you doing this. I know we got lots of work ahead. And just Nicole, thanks for your service on Dr. Cog. It is a large time commitment and very important. So thanks for all the time you spend on that and the great work you do there. All right. So that brings us to the end of the meeting. We have no further agenda items, so. Not discussion time, per se. If you want to, sorry, if you would like, a council member could say something here at the end.
People want to hear it. I'm asking, is, am I allowed to say it? So I just wanted to share, I had a most beautiful opportunity to learn more about the land back that was provided by Boulder County to representatives of our indigenous community. And I know we're fiscally restrained in all of these different things, but just, I just, it was really powerful to know that that's possible and, and still wanted, even if it's a small piece, even, I mean, it doesn't even, it, I know we've done a lot of work. I know we're ahead of many cities in even having tribal consultations, and that's incredible. But there was something that I wasn't expecting in, in that, in that transfer of, of property, of being able to have a mailbox and an address in, in, in their ancestral lands was just really powerful. So as we're going through and doing all this different work, you know, that was really the intention of that post. And I've actually been quite consistent in advocating for our tribal and indigenous, not only here on council, but my entire life. And anything that would take away from that was never, ever meant. To me, I'm always curious, why wouldn't you want to be by my side, our side, those who have experienced similar oppressions? There's not anything that takes away when you're by my side. It doesn't take away from my experience as an enslaved African when I'm with indigenous or, you know, other communities that are marginalized. It makes us stronger. And so that was really the intention. And to know that governments are capable of doing what's right, that's, it wasn't saying, no, nobody should get that, why they get it. No, it's saying, everybody should get it because they're worthy and they deserve it. That was the intention of that. And I would have appreciated a phone call. And I'm open anytime for a phone call, always. I don't want us to have conversations that are important and critical and hard on social media. I'm just asking, you, please, talk to me directly. You've known me for a year and a half. Do you really, really believe that I want to put our community at risk? Do you really believe that I would diminish something as horrific as something my own people have experienced? Why? What is the benefit? What, what about me? About my work? About what you've seen? Not on social media, but face-to-face? That would make you think that I would ever try and do that? I have apologized for not doing it right and not saying it right. I'm sorry. I'm not going to be perfect. But I'm asking you, please, I'm asking us, we have to model the kind of heart-to-heart work that we know needs to happen, both in the mirror and with each other. I'm committed to doing that work with you all. There is no other way. This is the team, and I'm honored to be on the team with you, even if I disagree in this, on this issue. There are so many other issues that we showed today that we can get together and connect on. And so I look forward to those hard one-on-ones with all of you. And I just ask respectfully, if you don't like something I've done, please contact me directly first. I think I, I think I deserve that, and I'll be sure to do the same. Thank you.
Thanks, Taysha. I'll reach out offline. All right. Anything else before we wrap up? All right. At 8:52 PM, I'll go ahead and gavel our meetings close. Meeting closed.